To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome to our July 11th, 2023 Tiverton School Committee meeting. Does anyone sign up for open form? Okay. I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Dr. Larkin, if I could ask to pull, actually, both, both the minutes enrollment and building committee meetings for discussion.
Okay. So, I'll second the motion. All in favor of pulling the consent agenda for discussion? Take a roll call vote, Mrs. Pavo?
Yes.
Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Palish?
Yes.
I vote yes. So, consent agenda is open for discussion. Mrs. Farnworth?
Thank you. Really, just a couple of comments and questions. On the meeting minutes from June 13th, I wasn't here. So, I know typically, when I watch town council meetings, that members who were not present typically abstain from voting on minutes that they weren't here to participate in.
Okay.
And secondly, it's not clear in the attendance that who was here and who wasn't. It says Mrs. Palish was not in attendance, but I was not here either, and it's not clear to me that that's...
Who was?
Hmm?
I said, "Who was?" It was the three of the rest of us.
I'm assuming because you have minutes that the rest of you were here.
That's how it works.
But if I could just ask that that be made a little bit more clear, who's here and who's absent?
So amend the minutes to reflect that Mr. Dakota, Mrs. Pavo, and I were here, and yourself and Mrs. Palish were not.
Yes, and again, I don't feel right voting on it.
Neither was Deb.
No.
Nope. Okay.
Then on the student enrollment reports, just, and this is not something I've noticed in the past, but it looks like whoever prepared it moved grade 12 to zero for June, and I understand there was graduation, but it really skews the numbers, you know?
Because, because the high school is too low.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you don't have 12th graders.
You should have them in the numbers for that one last reporting period, I would say, right? And then you move up all the other grades beginning...
Oh, this is in enrollment? Okay. For a minute, I thought you were back in the minutes.
Yeah, because it's showing a big drop in the number of students.
Because they're still enrolled as of June 1st. What's, is there a rationale there, Peter? Can we reinstitute them for the purposes of our enrollment?
Yeah, maybe just re-present at our next meeting?
Yeah.
Stupid thing.
When you pulled it out of Aspen?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's probably just a computer glitch thing, yeah.
Yep. I just wanted to call it out because it is a significant drop in the, in the number.
Could revoke their diplomas.
And then lastly, on the building committee minutes, I believe that they are not voted upon by the building committee per our agenda. I'm not sure how appropriate it is to actually have the building committee minutes in here before they're voted on.
Yeah, I agree there.
Well, that's why I put them on the correspondence, so you wouldn't be actually voting on it.
Well, we vote on the consent agenda typically in its entirety, which would indicate we would vote on those two. So, I guess my ask would be to just pull those from the agenda and not vote on them. I don't know how everyone else feels.
So basically, to pull from the consent agenda...
And put them under the regular portion.
We'll continue them until, we'll put them on next June.
Once they've been approved.
In July.
Yep.
Or July, what is July?
Or whenever the next meeting maybe.
In August. Our next meeting is theoretically August 1st right now, but perhaps we'll have others. So, you want to make that motion to pull 5A and 6A?
Happy to do that. I'll make the motion to remove from the consent agenda 5A and 6A.
Second. Ask for a vote, Mrs. Palish?
To remove?
To remove 5A and 6A from the consent agenda before we vote approval. Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
I vote, yes. Mrs. Pavo?
Yes.
Okay, so now we are back to the consent agenda for 4A. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve.
I wasn't here, but I don't have a problem approving them even if I wasn't. So, yes, I'll make a motion.
So, you guys, if each of you want to abstain, the motion will still pass because two will vote.
No, I have, no, I voted on minutes before when I haven't been here.
Okay.
It's fine.
So, you're going to make the motion to approve? Deb, you're making the motion to approve?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second them.
Hmm?
No.
You're not going to...
Can you second them?
Yeah, I can second them, yeah. All right, I'll second.
You're making mountains out of little hills, yeah.
Ask for a vote to approve the consent agenda. Mrs. Palish?
Yes.
Mrs. Farnworth?
Abstain.
Mrs. Pavo?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes.
I did watch the meeting, so comfortable voting on the minutes.
I can't say I did.
Well, I'm not going to say what I was going to say. All right, so we are up to item 7A, Eagle Scout Recognition, Troop 29. This is my item, and this is just to recognize three of our recent graduates and another citizen. Benjamin T. Curtis, Joshua G. Wood, Alex Nemirovsky, and Finn Cook-Duma, who is the grandson of Donna Cook, who many of you know, served for many years on the Budget Committee and Town Council, and we have traditionally presented them with certificates at their Court of Honor, which will be held on July 18th. Any discussion?
No, I just...
No, thank you.
Thank you for burning it on, and I would like to congratulate them as well.
Okay. Next is item 7B, Security Audit for Four Schools Discussion, Possible Vote. Dr. Sanghioni?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you received a report on the high school from Synergy Solutions, pretty detailed report going through multiple factors of safety and security for that building, and there was a discussion with the school committee, should we do that for our other remaining schools? Spoke to Synergy regarding that. That cost would be $20,000. So, what, we're here, I guess, to discuss if that's the direction we want to go in. I don't need to remind you that the operating budget is not available for that amount of money. So, if there's a, if you wanted to consider it from one-time money, like the fund balance or Medicaid, or if you wanted to look at it in a different sense, or if you, if you even want to do it. So, that's a discussion to be had.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Dr. Sanghioni's request for additional security audit at the cost of $20,000 with Synergy Solutions.
I'll second.
For discussion.
Yeah, I'll second. So, I'll open up discussion. Mrs. Pavo?
No.
Mrs. Palish?
I just, the only, I think it's a great idea, I think we need it, it's just we need to give direction on where we think the funds are going to come from. That's, that's our responsibility.
Yeah. Mrs. Farnworth?
Does this need to go to bid?
That's my other question.
Because this is well above the $5,000 threshold.
Are they on the NPA?
No, they were under five.
I think it does. Are they on the NPA at all?
No.
Okay. So, I think, yeah, my, I think it has to go to bid.
Which, which it can go out to bid, but we need to decide where, even if it does go out to bid, we need to identify.
We need to, right, right, right.
Well, can we wait till we have the number solid?
Yeah, we can do that.
As a result of the bid?
Well, we can vote to go out to bid, and that doesn't bind us in any particular way.
Correct.
If we don't take the bid.
What's the agenda item?
Huh?
What's the agenda item?
The agenda item is security audit for four schools discussion, so recovered.
Oh, okay, so I think we're okay, yeah.
Yeah. So...
So, do we want to make a motion to go out to bid?
Do I need to withdraw my motion?
Yes, you need to withdraw your motion.
I would like to withdraw my motion to approve Dr. Sanghioni's request for the continued security audit with Synergy Solutions.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to go out to bid for security audit for the other four schools?
Yes, I'll make a motion to go out to bid for a security audit for the remaining schools.
I'll second. Any additional discussion? Mrs. Pavo?
No, have nothing to say.
Mrs. Palish?
No.
Mrs. Farnworth?
The only request I would make is that when we do receive a bid, that we get the backup explaining what the services rendered will be, if that's okay, from the winning bidder, whoever that may be.
Yeah, it would be in the bids.
What's the turnaround time for the bid process? Like, we have to put it in the newspaper, right, or something?
Yeah, we have to advertise it on our website, but Heskel and, like, Providence Journal for a minimum of seven business days.
Okay.
And then we can open it. So, however, the lead time for the Providence Journal in terms of, like, for me to put in a...
Amy, could you put on your microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can't hear.
Sorry about that. So, the lead time for the Providence Journal, so it's like, if you want to put it in on a Sunday, for example, you have to have it to them on the Monday. So, it's probably a solid two to two and a half weeks from the minute you send it to the, to the Providence Journal to the time it opens. That's at a minimum. For several others, we let it go longer.
So, if we did it tomorrow morning, they would probably have it in the paper sometime next week?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got to write this bid. It's not going to happen tomorrow morning.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, don't you have to write it?
Yeah.
All right, bye.
So, you're talking, you're talking August.
At the earliest. I mean, it's fine. You don't have one now, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we have to comply with the law. Okay, and then we'll, you know, I would anticipate we would probably either take it out of fund balance or something.
Yeah, and we can, we can see what comes in at, and...
Ask a benefactor.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the motion has been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? I'll ask for a vote. Mrs. Palish?
Yes.
Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavo?
I'm going to abstain.
And I vote yes. Motion passes. So, so the motion was to go out to bid, and, you know, we'll see where they come. My, I was very impressed with the audit that they did at the high school, so...
Yes.
Hopefully, we'll be working with them again. Item 7C, High School Handbook, Possible Vote. Dr. Sanghioni, Mrs. Craven?
I'm going to turn it to Mrs., Principal Craven.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Hello.
So, all of you have received a copy of the handbook with the changes that we're putting forward, so I'm here tonight to answer questions you may have about those changes and so that I can get a vote on those changes in the handbook, please.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the handbook to open the discussion.
I will make a motion to approve the handbook as presented by Principal Craven.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so, thank you again for all the work with that.
No worries.
And I'll turn it over to questions from the committee. Mrs. Farnworth?
Mrs. Craven, do you think you could, in the interest of helping us here?
Sure.
And the size of this document, and the fact that we just received it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I can, I can definitely...
Summarize what the changes are?
Yes, absolutely. So, one change is the cell phone policy. Right now, students can have their phones on them in the cafeteria and in the hallways during transition times. We put a policy in effect last year saying they can have them on their person, but tucked away in their backpack during instruction, right? We really want to emphasize the instruction piece. Next year, after meeting with teachers, they found it very difficult to enforce the policy because kids would sneak their phone out of their backpack, et cetera. So, in speaking with Dr. Sanghioni, we made a decision that we're going to purchase pockets for every classroom, where students, upon entry to the classroom, have to put their phone in that pocket, and then they can retrieve it after class is over. This will eliminate them, you know, trying to access their phone, getting text messages. We have so many issues during the school day with students texting one another with bullying, sending pictures of one another. It's just disruptive, right? It's logical to me that if we're going to try to teach students, the cell phone is a distraction during instruction. So, that's, that's one change, that they'll be asked to, and required to, I should say, put that phone away upon entry to the classroom. The other change is the, the policy for makeup work. We had a hard time last year chasing down kids. We wanted it more than they did as far as, like, getting them to the finish line, and so teachers were extremely flexible in allowing them to make up work that they missed during the course of any, any time during the quarter. So, we tightened that up quite a bit, again, after speaking with the teachers, made a recommendation that students are allowed to make up work, even if they go away on vacation, but we now have time limitations as to when that work can be made up. So, if, for example, if a student skips or misses a class, they, they don't make up the work, right? Because that's something they're doing of their own will. But if a student is absent for school for any verified type of absence, that would be, you know, funeral, it would be medical absence, it would be religious holidays, et cetera, then they can make up the work on, on their own time. If a student misses school for, you know, three consecutive days, then they would have one, five days from the date of return to make up that work. After that fifth day, if it's a, if it's a summative assignment, long-term project, test, et cetera, then they'll lose 10 points off their final grade after that fifth day. Well, that's, those are the most significant changes in the handbook. And again, it's, it's designed so that students are more responsible. It's one of our core competencies for Portrait of a Graduate. The ask is common, we want them to start to understand the responsibility of being a student, and when you come to school, you're required to follow dates, deadlines, and I think we're preparing them more for life beyond high school, when we start to get a little more restrictive with what we accept.
Thank you.
And those are the two biggest changes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Farnworth, other questions?
I did start going through this last night, and I only got to page...
Yeah, the, the, like I said, the biggest changes would be on pages 23 and 24, right? And that's, that's just really not a change, it's just we reorganized the language referring to tardies. But the makeup procedure is on page 25.
Okay, thank you.
Of the handbook, in 26.
I do have a couple of comments, starting really on the page three.
Okay.
I know you, you know, you update these every year, and one of the drawbacks of putting names, phone numbers, et cetera, is things can change. You have me listed as the vice chair of the school committee? I am not.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. That shouldn't, that, that's definitely something. This, I was working off last year's draft, not final, so...
I understand. Like I said, it's, it's just one of those drawbacks.
No, I completely appreciate that, because it was the same thing last year.
And then, you know, I just have a question. You're referencing telephone numbers here, there, everywhere. Some cases, I'm seeing the area code, some cases, I'm not. You know, having grown up here, when I grew up, you didn't even need the 62.
Yeah.
But now we're at, you know, for, if it's Rhode Island, it's 401, and, you know, I'm seeing numbers on here for a couple people that are not the 624, 625, right? There are other numbers, and I am assuming they're area code 401, but I can't be certain of it.
Yeah, this, remember, this is a draft, right? I didn't really look at those things closely. I'm more looked at, because I didn't think that would be something, but I do appreciate you bringing it to my attention.
And the other one that stood out to me, and I'm not picking on Mrs. McGuire, but she's the only Mrs. in this entire document. There's no Mr.'s, Mrs.'s, Mrs.'s, except for Mrs. McGuire.
Great. Thank you for pointing that out to me as well.
Then, secondly, is it okay if I continue?
You have the floor.
I started going through the, the first several pages, noticing references to a number of school committee policies.
Mm-hmm.
Which is great. I didn't find that you present them in a consistent fashion, so when you go through here...
Mm-hmm.
Could you, you know, in one case, I see the link with the name of the policy, which isn't even really the name of the policy, but there's a link. In another case, I just see a policy number with no name mentioned, no link, nothing. Then, yet another case, not the name of the policy, just a hyperlink itself.
Yeah, this is, this is a draft. That will all be cleaned up.
Okay.
Absolutely. I honestly didn't look at those things. I was more looking at putting in, in strike throughs in the, the significant changes that we were going to put forth, but we haven't gone through it.
Just, just wanted to point to that as, you know, things.
I appreciate it, I really do.
And then, I just had a question. I wanted to talk about the bell schedule.
Sure.
On page 15.
A, B, C, D, E, A, B, C, D, E, A, B, C, D, E, A, B, C.
And I don't think there's any change to it. I just wanted to, really, for transparency's sake, ask you to help us understand, you know, how you have the rotating A, B, C, D, E's, and then you have all F and all G, and I understand you have 50-minute blocks throughout the day, assuming that, that 11 to 12:21 is the lunch periods.
Correct.
With classes on or about. Can you kind of expand on what the rest of it's about here, especially the, the last two?
So, the last two are blocked because we, we want to move our career and technical education programs forward and get the students out of the classroom at the end of the day and into internships where they can get credit for the classes and the career programs that they're in. For example, CNI, right? They go to Brookdale. They, they are able to leave the building and do their 80 clinical hours at Brookdale during those two blocks. So, that, that's why they're fixed and not rotating. Now, if we move forward and we find that, you know, it could be just last period, or it might be three days a week, then we can rotate those two blocks, but we, we don't want to do so until we know what their schedules will be.
Are there any other offerings besides career and tech during those two blocks?
Absolutely. We have, we have students going out, they went out last year, so they do work-study programs. So, it's not just...
I mean, what about the rest of the kids who are not in CTE? What are they doing in those blocks?
Yeah, they can, they can go out as well for work-study programs.
I think your question is, during F and G block, you're offering paths or...
Oh, absolutely. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, that's exactly right.
I'm like, are you letting them all out the door?
No, no, not all out the door, only those who, who are looking for those opportunities. But yes, that's part of the regular schedule.
It is, okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay. And I did have just one more call out. Sorry, I saw it as I was flipping through here. On page nine, you have, under the wonderful Tiverton jacket, copies available in the Tiverton Public Schools Policy Manual, of the, in the Tiverton Public Schools Policy Manual in every school office and in the central office. Do we really have paper copies of all these manuals in our locations?
We technically should, but most of it is on our website now, but I can definitely eliminate that as well.
Or an alternate statement that provides a link to it?
Right. One of, actually, Sam, last year made a recommendation that we always keep paper copies in the office of different handbooks, et cetera. So, we do keep a couple of copies, and he made the recommendation that we also keep copies of the student handbook as well, just in case, so. But I think you're, you're 100% spot on, and also put in a link there to our website, so thank you.
Sure. That's all I had. Thank you.
Mrs. Palish?
Same thing I always ask, just because it's nice for people that are listening in. Tell me the process that you and your staff go through to come up with the changes.
So, we met as a faculty, and we, I met with them during PLC meetings in our department chair meeting, and saying, "What changes do we need to implement next year that makes sense for the students and the instruction?" Because ultimately, that's why we're here. We're here to give instruction. And so, the teachers gave me, the department chairs gave me feedback from each PLC, and then I kind of put it all together and said, in a survey, sent that survey out to all of the faculty, saying, "What are, what are the changes? What are our priorities that we want to focus on?" One of those priorities that came back from the survey results was cell phones. So, that's, that's why that became a priority in the handbook. And makeup work, that's why that's a priority in the handbook, so that's the process we go through.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mrs. Pavo, anything?
I have nothing.
Yeah, I have no other questions. Thank you for all the work and for the teachers' and students' work, and Sam's work, I guess.
Yeah, exactly. It continues, even in his absence. Tell him that. He'll be happy to hear that.
Yeah. I think he wanted copies in the office so he could use it to litigate things, so. So, motion's been made. Any comments or questions from the audience? Motion's been made and seconded. I'll ask for a vote. Mrs. Palish?
Yes.
Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavo?
Yes.
I vote yes, so thanks again for all the work.
Thank you.
All right. Where is my agenda?
7D, the COPS grant.
So, item 7D, the COPS grant. Dr. Sanghioni?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the agency, community-oriented, oriented policing services, there's a grant called School Violence Prevention Program, and we seek your approval tonight for a grant we'd like to submit that would potentially award, award the school department $495,000 for the following items. The video and auditory access at all of our schools, part of the safety and security. Right now, there are two separate programs. We want to integrate them. Security film and all the windows that we deem necessary at all five of our schools, and to redo the vestibules at TMS and Ranger. Part of the grant of the $495,000 that would be awarded means that the Tiverton Public Schools would have to match a grant of $165,000. So, it's three quarters paid for by the grant. The receiving entity, Tiverton Public Schools, would be responsible for $165,000. What I want the school committee to know is that anything that we pay, if we can submit it under our Stage Two, would then be eligible for a minimum of 35% reimbursement. So, out of that $165,000, you'd be getting back almost 60, and so, it's, it's a $100,000 investment to really receive $600,000 in services.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask for a motion to open the discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
So, Mrs. Pavo, questions?
No.
Mrs. Palish?
So, this is contingent on our Stage Two...
The reimbursement.
I wouldn't say it's contingent. It's a separate grant that we're asking your permission to submit, and then if we should receive it. What I'm saying to you is...
I guess, if, so if we get it and we can't match...
Right.
What happens to it?
We wouldn't accept the grant.
Okay. Okay. That's all I need to know.
And we also have three years to spend that. It doesn't all have to be in one year.
And do you have three years to match?
You have three years to match and three years to get reimbursed for the $495,000.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Mrs. Farnworth?
And the match again was $165,000, did you say?
$165,000. It's on page 15 of 26. It's not the page number of the packet, it's the page number of the grant.
Can I, can I just ask in the future that a summary memo really would have gone a long way on this one? I started flipping through the thing, and I really didn't understand what the real ask was going to be. I appreciate knowing it now, but if we'd had a memo, we'd have it memorialized in our package as the summary, what the purpose was, so.
Okay.
I, how long does it take for this to work its way through?
Well, no, in October.
Is that, okay. We do have fund balance to fall back on should we need to.
Yeah, I think to Amy's point, you have three years, and you have, you know, hopefully you'll submit a Stage Two in September. That's going to go through a process of approvals and rides. And this is work that would, you're looking at next summer, probably at the earliest to start doing this work and then submitting-
No, but if we were forced to use the fund balance, I would think we would encumber that right away, as soon as it was-
We accepted the grant, we would have to.
Yeah. And then try to find, get reimbursement, probably from the town.
Right. Well, the reimbursement would go to the, would go to the town, and they would have to then allocate it to us, assuming they put it in the account that they're getting back from Ride. And, but they still have to vote to allocate it. We don't have free access to that money.
But it's going to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But it's going to take a few months, to your point, to even work through, even know if we're-
We won't know if we've received the grant till October, and then it's got another process to work its way through.
Okay. And, so, the way I understood this was, we would, the grant would be for $495,000, and we're essentially adding 30% on top of that.
25%.
25%. So it's $125,000, not, well, I guess.
Okay, it's 25%?
It's 25% of the project total, not 25% of the grant. So the total of the project would be $660,000, and $495 would be a grant, and $165 would be from us.
Yes. I remember trying to do percentages. So that's a very complicated way of figuring it out, but that sounds about right. Okay, so-
And that is in the backup.
I was going to say, that's how the grant is specified.
Right, 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 right. So my question is, there were a number of recommendations from the security audit in the high school, and then we also had things in the capital plan that we still have to go through that process. This covered some, but not all of the major recommendations from the security audit.
This would cover the major recommendations, for sure. The ones that we can do. There's some recommendations in there that we can't do, but the ones that we can do, linking our auditory and video conferencing was probably one of the top ones. The glazing on the windows was one of the top ones, and obviously redoing the vestibules were very important to get done.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll talk more about that in executive, but, okay. I had concerns that there was more that needed to be done than that would cover, so.
Oh, sure there is.
There certainly is, but the maximum grant is $500,000.
Right, I get that. So, but, okay. So, anything else from anyone?
I just want to thank Dr. Sanghoni and Ms. Roderick for putting that grant package together.
You're welcome.
Seeing the number of pages that it entailed and the detail reminds me of the hard work you guys have to do.
Happy to do it.
Okay. Any questions from any members of the public present? Otherwise, I'll ask for a vote. Mrs. Pavey?
Yes.
Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So again, thanks much, guys. Next is item 7E, locker room capital projects and capital requests to the town council. Dr. Sanghoni?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So I've given you a document in your package, sort of updating you on where we are with the locker room project and the money that we've allocated toward it so far, the funding, how it would work through Ride, the funding that's available, that's the only approved project that we have right now. The reimbursement is quite high on this project, and, you know, the information that we've put a lot of work into this up to this age. I mean, this thing is good to go.
Dr., before you go any further, can you help us out here? What page?
It's like 106.
This is a ginormous package. 106, thank you.
106, 107. It starts with a memo.
It's a memo.
So it starts with a memo dated June 22nd?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the one that says safety and security?
Yes.
But you're talking about lockers?
Well, it ties it all together, because safety and security was a concern about how, you know, potential revenue that the school department will receive, how we would use it. And so what I tried to show is that we've got a grant that you just approved that could cover safety and security. Second thing is, you have a Stage Two that hasn't been submitted yet, so there's not a project out there that can be reimbursed, other than the locker room project. You have a locker room project right now that we've invested over $200,000 in, that could go unreimbursed, non-reimbursable, unless we continue with the project. You have, this project is approved by Ride. It's approved at 45%. So the reimbursement back is $990,000, based on a $2.2 million estimate. And then this locker room, you know, we call it the locker room project, but it really takes into consideration some significant safety recommendations. You know, the side of the building that's facing the tennis courts is probably our weakest area, so it's going to update the cameras there, it's going to update the doors, and we're going to put a speaker system that, as you probably read in the Synergy Solutions report, that, you know, there's no auditory getting out there. So, not only does it take care of the deplorable locker rooms, the bathrooms, the antiquated things that are there, it enhances the safety and security of the building. So, it's a project that we want to see continue and move forward with, and, you know, that's sort of what this memo gets at, is the recommendation to continue to move forward with it. So this rests with your dialogue now.
So, I'm not sure that we're at a point where we can make a motion, because I think there's some discussion that has to happen beforehand. So I guess I'll open the floor to questions first.
Can we make a motion to approve, and then?
Okay, that's fine.
Just-
Okay. Well, I'm not sure what we're approving.
I'm not even sure what he's asking us to approve.
That's, that's my point.
Well-
Yeah.
So, yeah, so what's the motion that you would want?
So we need to, we need to, we need to meet with the town council, and I guess I'm looking for your affirmation, what you've already approved, this project you have approved, but we haven't received funding. And so I want to, I think we should go back to the town council with your affirmation, of the building committee's affirmation, saying, we'd like you to still fund this. And that's, that's the situation we're at.
So you don't really, you don't need a motion, I'm sorry, Dr. Lurkendee?
Yeah.
So you don't need a motion as much as you want us to-
Agree.
-affirm basically our prior vote?
Your prior vote.
So if somebody wants to reconsider that prior vote, I guess they can, but we, you know, the reality is, in the minutes, and we have a vote-
You do.
A vote that approved this, and this is what we presented, and this was the funding. So unless someone wants to reconsider that vote, that's the only vote we have.
True, so-
So, yeah, go ahead, Pierre.
I was just going to say, then, we're all comfortable with us-
Well, I'm not, I'm just making, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, that's the facts.
Those are the facts.
Those are the facts, that the only, the only motion we've approved for a capital item currently that we wanted to go before the council was this.
Right. And you have gone in front of the council with this-
I agree.
And received an initial approval on it.
Yes.
And, and I guess, just again, to my point, I'm not sure what the motion would be, but maybe we don't need one one way or the other. We did revise the capital request to the town council based on a revision of the estimate for the locker room. And then that estimate has gone up additionally. So the original estimate from RGB was $1.2 million. Then, from-
Brewster Thornton.
Brewster Thornton. It was 1.9. Now it's probably more like 2.2, and that's probably the more realistic. In addition, the capital, the other capital requests we made were for security upgrades, the really significant ones, $400,000, well, about $425,000 in security upgrades, and then another $70,000 to $80,000 for some other updates. So, the total, so the reason why I added capital request to the town council, sort of after the locker room thing, was, do we want to review the entire capital request to the town council and modify it, or let stand what we voted in January, which was 1.9 plus the $400,000, $200,000, $42,000, and $38,000? Is this making any sense at all?
So the 1.9 would be short $300,000?
By the most up-to-date-
Have we voted the 1.9?
Yes.
Well, we voted it as part of that.
As part of the request, we revised, so the night that we had, it was like January 6th, I think, I think it was the 6th. Anyway, it was, yes, the first meeting we had in January, we revised our capital request in order to more accurately reflect the cost of renovating the locker rooms. We have not revised that additionally.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
We have been talking about both locker room project, as well as the security issues for several months.
Mm-hmm.
And aside from us approving this grant application this evening, haven't really taken any kind of solid steps toward either, with the exception of the architect's work. It is pretty clear to me that because the town council controls the funds, and ultimately controls whether or not we move forward with any of these projects, it is also clear to me that at some town council, at least one town council meeting, the town council president indicated she was waiting for us to come back with our security requests.
Yep.
I would like to propose and ask that we have a joint meeting with the town council here at the library, so that we can all face each other, speak to each other, talk about the capital needs of the schools, and how realistic it is to get any of this approved. And let's just, you know, have an honest conversation with each other, and move forward one way or another, so we can stop talking about this over and over with it, not actually doing anything.
You, 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 you know, that's why I put-
Can you put in that request?
So what-
That we have this joint meeting?
So what would we be discussing? The $2 million, $4 million, the whole cap, like, like, what's-
So there, okay, so if, I'll give you my-
The $52 million that we need?
Put them on, put them on the table, and let's talk about them.
All right. So this is, there are, I guess, three related topics. One is the security audit, which we've really only just gotten in the last, what, three weeks ago?
And we only have for one school?
And we only have for one school, and we've only had one meeting where we even discussed it very, you know, very, in a very cursory fashion, because there's only three of us here. But, we're going to do that again tonight.
Okay.
So that's one thing. And the town council is interested in the content of the security audit, and we, as a committee, need to discuss how we have a meeting with them about that. That's, that's one thing, because I think that will shape their-
Happens to me all the time.
All right. That will, that I think-
Could have been so much worse.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That, I think, will shape their view of any allocation of the casino money. Then, that's the next sort of related issue, is how they allocate the casino money, how that, how their allocation is shaped by the fact that we have the COPS grant, and how it's shaped by, again, the discussion about the security audit. And then the third thing is that, in order to do anything other than the locker rooms, so whether it be a security upgrade, a, you know, bigger flagpole, whatever it is, it has to go into our capital plan and be submitted as part of a Stage Two project on September 15th. And yes, I would like very much to have a meeting with the town council, probably a couple of meetings. I think one would be just to talk about the security audit and sort of walk them through it, and we need to discuss an executive, based on Ben's advice, you know, how much is released? Is it all released? Does it send to the Secana Times? That's a decision that the committee has to make. The committee has to make a decision to request the meeting with the town council, which, in a very preliminary discussion with the president, she was open to that, and we even tossed around some dates, but I need to hear from you guys, when you can make it, and when you want to have it. And at the same time, talk to them about, when are they going to, when, when can we have, you know, now that we know the results of the security audit from the high school, how do they want to go about allocating casino money for ongoing projects, security stuff, and-
And that can all be part of that meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it can all be part of that meeting, absolutely.
Come up with an agenda that everybody agrees to, and-
Yeah, well, I think, I think the, I don't know, I don't know. They may want to split it up into a couple of different meetings. I'll have to talk with them, but-
I'll leave that to you. I think the timing is what concerns me. So, so A, is the $2 million off the table? Because if it is, and we're not going forward, we need to stop what the architects are doing. B, we do have a September 15th deadline. We're not even going to know about this COPS grant until October.
Right.
So, that can't even really be part of the discussion. And, you know, the, the security audit, we only have, we don't have all the schools. That's not going to be done, probably before September 15th. So, I'm a little concerned with the timing, that even if we start these discussions, it's not going to lead to anything that's going to be actionable by September 15th, and we're going to miss the deadline.
For the Stage Two?
Yes.
In order to get, yeah, so that's, we don't need the Stage Two in order to get reimbursement for the locker rooms, and we only need the Stage Two to get reimbursement. And, there's probably some flexibility in, in that date as well, but, you know, I'm not the one who actually sets the deadline. It's only to get reimbursement for anything we add, or anything else they allocate money for. So, you know, yes, if there is a, the, the, yeah, so the only deadline that we're actually up against is September 15th, for any additional capital expenditures that we, for which we want to get reimbursed, which of course-
Now, that doesn't mean that we don't have enough without the rest of the schools, that we certainly could come up with some good ideas.
Right, no, I know. And if you look at the security audit-
Sure.
The, its major recommendations are, you know, I think largely generalizable to the rest of the schools as well.
Sure.
So, I'm not, I don't, I'm not expecting, I'm expecting more expense, but I'm not expecting gigantic surprises. If anything, we did the right school, because it's the most decrepit. You know, in terms, although, well-
My high school is decrepit.
Well, and it's, I guess, if the-
Well, I call your high school, not your decrepit.
If the timing is a deadline, or if the deadline-
Count your blessings.
If the deadline and timing is concerned, we certainly can work with what we have.
Correct.
And add on later. But I think the biggest question for me, and you're right, we can't do it without meeting with the council, is, are the lockers dead?
I, I don't think they are, or should be, because they both are the only project we have approved right now, and also they're the only, they encompass part of the security upgrades.
So-
Yeah. Yeah.
September 15th is a Stage Two deadline. When's the next Stage Two deadline?
February 15th.
February 15th. And if we, if we have a Stage Two submittal, February 15th, in addition to September 15th, what is the reimbursement difference going to be? Will it be impacted?
It could be.
It could be.
What we know right now, the, the rates are good through December of 2023.
The incentives, our base rate-
Additional incentives. There's always reimbursement for safety and-
Yeah, yeah. We always have a base rate of 35%.
There's always at least that 35% reimbursement that we can count on. So, wouldn't it behoove us to try to do what we can in September, understand that we may not have everything to submit in a Stage Two in September, though it may have to wait till-
Yeah, yeah.
So that's part of the conversation, too.
Yeah. And, and then the only other wrinkle to this is that when you submit the Stage Two, you have to declare your financing mechanism. So are you going to do it?
More conversation, right?
Right.
So, how does July 24th sound? I mean, that's the thing, is we need to, if they're going to commit to the meetings, which I think they will, we have to commit to the meetings, too, and it's going to be-
I may be away for work that week. And I'm not sure. I'll, I'll know tomorrow.
Can we pick a couple of tentative dates, and then you can just give them those?
Sure.
What about the 24th? Did, did they give you any other ideas, or just-
31st- Thirty-first, uh, that's probably-
Yeah, those are a couple of Mondays. Can people work the twen-, you know, either the twenty-fourth or the thirty-first?
And-
Does it have to be a Monday?
Well, it doesn't and I can certainly get back with her and, and sort of see what's, what she thinks is gonna, you know, she's, I think, having trouble getting a quorum too, because it's the summer. So, um, the other thing is you ca-, I think we can, because the, I don't know, I, I envision the sort of discussion with them of the security audit to be pretty long. We could break that into two segments and, you know, we don't necessarily need to have a quorum for that since we're just kind of like telling them what we have learned.
I think we need a quorum.
I think it'd be better.
To hold a meeting? We need a quorum.
Well, to have it, if we're gonna have it in executive, we would.
We don't necessarily need to be meeting, we can-
Dr. Larkin, we need to meet on every one of these.
Okay, all right, I'm telling, I'm just telling you that-
No.
We wouldn't have to, but you prefer to.
I would much prefer that we, we actually have an official meeting.
So, so do I, but-
So the twenty, maybe you do the security audit on the twenty-fourth and then on the thirty-first we continue? Is that what you're thinking, is breaking it into two?
I think that that would be a digestible-
What about next week? That's not on the table?
Uh, no, because we actually had talked a little bit about next week and she didn't think she could get a quorum and I'm not gonna be in town for whatever that's worth. You don't need me to have it. Elaine, are you available the twenty-fourth, thirty-first? Any other thoughts about this? Peter?
Yep.
Amy?
July, we're talking about this month.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
So I'll get back to her and say-
And I can get back to you tomorrow and know your status.
All right, and we can talk more about the security aspect of it once we're in executive and-
Yeah, or maybe we just bang it all out in one night, you know, do that for an hour.
No reason why we can't do that, no reason why we can't.
If, if we're here, let's just find a long meeting.
Try and predict a rainy Saturday and do it on Saturday. I don't, I don't know what they're, you know.
Right. Okay.
So I will reach out to Mrs. DiMaderas and suggest the twenty-fourth and/or the thirty-first and/or see if there's other dates that work better for them and we'll go from there. Yes. Okay, sorry. Hope everything's okay.
So at this point though, the only, the, the only motion that we've taken was the one point nine, you know, could we, could we like get that and-
Yeah, so I-
I, oh, I did see that, Jerry. You had sent it to us.
Yeah, and if not, I can-
No, you did. So that's the only motion we know, have that we definitely proved that we see.
Well, the vote's there, so as you pointed out, no one's made a motion to reconsider who was voting in the affirmative, so.
That's my point, is, is we do have a, a live vote that is out there.
But I think, I think, you know, they're gonna be more comfortable allocating money knowing what the, what's in the security.
Well, and I was gonna say to Diane's point, we can have a motion out there all we want, but they control the casino money, so if they're not comfortable with that after going through the safety.
And I think too, that there may very well be the suggestion that they tell us, you know what, you gotta skinny down that locker room project. Who knows?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the, the, the price has nearly doubled in the, in the year we've been talking about it. So let's, again, let's have the conversation, get things determined and move forward. We, I, we have a, a local school district who in less time than what we've taken talking about this has decided to build a new high school.
Which local school district?
Bristol Warren.
Oh, huh?
They got everybody on board and they're going gangbusters.
I still don't wanna be them.
No, I don't wanna be them either, but the point is, is we're taking too long. And I think in part because of our political structure, but let's, let's see what we can do to get beyond it.
Well, and I think that's it, is Diane, that's right. It's like the reality is, we don't control the money, the council does. It's fine, the people gave them that, that right and they, you know?
We need to talk.
So, so we need to know what they're gonna be on board with and we need to work together, so.
Okay.
Is that all clear, Peter?
Crystal.
Can we move on?
Sure.
So there is no vote this evening on that item?
There's a vote that stands and we have to meet with them.
Well, yeah, we don't need to do anything though. So what's the F then?
So then seven F is the approved the stage two contract with BTG.
Right, so in your packet you have a contract to allow BTG to prepare our stage two submission. This contract has been reviewed by Ben in his office, they've gone through it probably for the last six weeks back and forth. And again, as you know, as we already referenced, the only project we have approved by RITAS is locker room project. So for any reimbursement on any safety and security projects or anything else we want to do, we've got to submit a stage two. Once that's accepted, then you have the right to submit projects for reimbursement.
So we're giving, so we're approving the contract to allow them to go ahead and put together the stage two. What are they basing that stage two on? Are they working with the building committee or?
Building committee and, and our principals, administrative team, so working on-
And ultimately they'll come back to us so that we-
I'm gonna ask you for a date later on if you want to meet on August.
And, and then ultimately the council.
Yep.
Okay.
They've laid out, uh, meetings that they want to have in place.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve that contract?
Oh, second. Any additional discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm looking at our backup. What I see is a memo dated twelve fifteen twenty-two. I'm trying to understand its role in this vote.
Well, that's the beginning of it and then it, it went through, again, they've been working with, um, with our attorneys on getting this thing to a stage where we could bring it to you. So that's when it basically started and Ben made to make a lot of changes. They had a lot of negotiations to get this contract to a point where Ben would say it's acceptable for you folks.
That's all the red, Peter?
You don't have the contract?
I, I have a document here.
Yeah, that's what, it's all the red.
And I really do wish our attorney was here to ask him questions about it, but. And what I also see immediately after that memo is a breakdown of fees, right? Tiverton School District for stage two. We haven't previously voted on any stage two-
The only thing you voted was the, the locker room project, for their contract on the locker room project.
So this is for two hundred and four, two hundred and five thousand dollars rounded up? And this will cover a stage two whose content is yet to be determined?
Is being determined and getting ready for presentation to the building committee, school committee and town council.
Which was what my question was, is who are they working with to, to put this together?
Building committee initially and, and also, also all our building administrators.
And we've already spent two hundred thousand dollars on-
The locker room project.
Just the locker room, stage two or just design?
That's design.
Just design.
Yeah, so that's in stage three.
Okay.
So that's construction documents, estimated documents, um-
That's much, so the stage two is a higher level?
Yeah, no, I, I understand, I just-
And plus you have a commissioning agent now, you have an OPM and so all those people are working on that locker room project and all those people are, you know, there's costs associated with those people.
So we have not until today approved a contract with Brewster Green? I thought we had.
Not for this.
Not for the stage two.
This is a separate contract every time?
Well, you have a specific contract for, to go, so they picked up where RGB ended off-
Correct.
Picking up the stage two, creating the stage three documentation that has been submitted to RITAS. You approved that contract.
So the old one.
The old one, so they've submitted that documentation to RITAS. So they, they're ready to go out to bid soon as we know there's a funding source, hence why we need that meeting.
So this could be stage two point B.
Well, this, this is a whole separate stage two.
Well, that's what I mean, it's, it's-
But this agreement says December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. It's in our package, this document, this contract.
That's when, that's when this, that's when it started. I mean, that's when the-
So what are we voting on today? If we can't, if we've already voted on this?
No, you haven't voted on this.
We have not voted on this.
No, you have not. The only thing you voted is the stage three submittal art, for, um-
From the prior stage two which was done by RGB.
Correct, okay.
So this is the new stage two that would be submitted September fifteenth? And then we'll have yet another stage two submitted in February?
Potentially.
Well, hopefully not. Hopefully this goes in September and you, and we're done for five years.
Just saying.
Potentially. I'll be honest, I haven't read through the whole thing. And I'm just concerned that a yes vote tonight is going to encumber us to something I don't understand.
If it gives you any confidence, it's a standard stage two contract that again, Ben and his associates have gone through line by line and to, as Mrs. Palace has pointed out, anything you see in red has been changed to the favor of, of the school committee. So you have the recommendation of your attorney to approve this.
So it's saying that the architect's responsibility, okay? The scope is architectural and engineering services as indicated in the attached exhibit B, cost proposal dated twelve fifteen twenty-two. Do we have that exhibit here?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry to be prolonging it, but-
No, I think you're-
Can we continue it if you want to spend more time?
Okay, so exit, exhibit B begins in our packet at page hundred and something. I can't get it to come up. It's sec- Can we delay this until we have the meeting with the town council?
Yeah, what's the-
They're not, you're not gonna make your September fifteenth deadline? They've got, I've got requests for three meetings to set up immediately upon approval of this contract.
And they can't do it without this.
They've been doing this work.
So why didn't we vote on it sooner?
Because our attorney kept this contract, you know, for a long, long time. I mean, you can, it just, I, I guess you want, I want you to know the outcome of a decision of that magnitude.
You know what, I, I'm gonna go ahead. Do we, do we have a motion on the floor? Okay. Do we?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Okay, we do.
We didn't even know if we had one on the floor.
Yeah, we're on the floor.
I mean, this is what we hire attorneys to do.
I guess, yeah, and I, I'm not sure why our prior contract didn't include this as part of the scope of work. Not that we were necessarily-
I don't think we ever, Dr. Stink, you only didn't, said we never signed it.
No.
You did sign it. You signed a contract-
With Brewster Thornton, yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
For stage three for the locker.
I, I know, but I, I'm just, I'd have to go back and look at that contract, why we're still not covered to have them continue doing the work. I mean, it's, it's sort of like, I don't know, executing a contract for every single meeting almost.
Yeah, I think they saw it as, you know, they were picking up something that another firm started. So they wanted to break it out as that's one job and now we got a whole separate job here to start on.
Which they'll run with and if it's stage two is however many years, then they-
Five years, multiple projects, multiple stage three submittals.
Can we get the date on this contract to be something a little more current?
Well, that's just the cover letter, that's not the date on the contract.
I see it referenced several times within.
I think you have to clean up the document itself. It does say December twenty-second all over the place. It's not off about all over the place.
I mean, that's what's probably giving me the most pause, is that this document was out there seven, almost eight months ago.
Yeah, and that's how long Ben's been working on it?
That's how long, exactly how long he's been working on it, back and forth.
And I don't, I, I just can't find exhibit B that speaks to this cost proposal unless that's what the first document was meant to be.
Yeah, I think that's why.
I mean, our alternative is to ask him to be here and meet again in a timely fashion.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry to do this.
No, I under, I understand your concerns.
Well, let's, let's, let's just vote. Vote yes or vote no. If we vote no, then we'll have to come back. I mean, we have a motion.
There is a motion. Okay, ask for a vote. Mrs. Palace?
Yes.
Mrs. Farnworth?
I abstain.
I vote yes. I believe the motion passes?
Yes.
Yeah, technically. Always was a little unclear about that one. All right. I, it would be, I think, good, Peter, for Ben to come to our next meeting, which may be the twenty-fourth or maybe the first or maybe the thirty-first or maybe every day that week at the rate we're going.
Sure, once you determine, uh, what it is, we'll-
Okay.
We'll get him there.
And if he can't be there in person-
Or zoom, zoom with us or something.
To zoom in or, or send an associate.
Yeah, he was tied up tonight.
I understand. All right. Uh, we're up to item seven G, OPEB, other post-employment benefits discussion. Ms. Roderick.
Thank you, Dr. Larkin. Mrs. Farnworth asked me to present some information about our OPEB plan, which was implemented well before my tenure here. So just for everyone's benefit, I guess, and OPEB plan is other post-employment benefits. And it's employed, it's a plan employed by municipalities and government agencies for retiree benefits, basically. And it normally involves healthcare, dental, things like that, but can, depending on the entity, can include, you know, life insurance, dental, sort of any other sort of benefits that they wish to offer their retirees. In Tiverton, health and dental for retirees is only offered up until age sixty-five, then they are mandated to go onto Medicare. And so, um, and we do have an option for them to continue with their life insurance, but that's at their full cost, not the district's cost. So they can do that beyond age sixty-five, but they have to pay the full cost every year. Danny, if you could put up the second one, there we go, so. So our OPEB fund is audited as part of the financial statement audit every year and, um, Danny, I'm sorry, can you, yeah, there you go. Perfect. So as of June thirty, twenty twenty-two, our liability as calculated by the actuaries was almost seven point four million dollars. And we have a cash balance or an investment balance of about four hundred and sixty-six thousand, which leaves our unfunded balance of about six point seven million dollars in a liability. Now that is all, other than the, um, the cash or the investment balance that we have, all of that is actuarially calculated. We don't provide them with any documents or anything like that, other than sort of the age of our employees, the number of employees, that sort of thing. Historically, it looks like Dr. Larkin-
Can I ask you a question there?
Certainly.
So when you say that it's a liability, that means if everybody who could suddenly retire at age fifty-five, we would have that as a potential liability? It's not something we are liable for right now in terms of?
Correct. Correct.
So if the, you know, somebody who is twenty-two decide, you know, I'm retiring, we've got forty-three years of health and dental benefits theoretically?
Right.
If such things happened in this world?
Correct.
And after we declare bankruptcy, they're out of luck anyway.
Right.
Got it?
Yes. And also, um, uh, as a practice, uh, in my tenure here, we have not made any contributions to it. There are options, uh, for example, from the trust, when, uh, the health and dental pool, sometimes we get, what, if you want to call it a rebate, um, based on utilization and things like that. We, um, have the option to put that towards OPEB. The one, the rebates we've received in recent years, I have opted not to do that just because of the structural deficit and we could use the benefit, uh, to the bottom line. And to be honest, we currently in our operating budget fund medical and dental premiums for the retirees. It's, it's about a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy thousand a year for the medical and I'm gonna say, I don't know, maybe ten thousand for the dental. So though, we have those premiums in there that, uh, we pay. So it's almost like we have a double provision. We have the OPEB. And again, I'm not sure, um, when it was elected to begin the OPEB plan and, and who decided to do that, but historically, since I've been here, we have paid for those benefits out of the operating budget.
How does that, okay, and how does that compare with other districts? Do other districts fund this fund more generously or? Because it seems like it would be just money sitting in.
No, it's, yeah, it's, you know, this is sort of the retirement piggy bank. And again, it also depends on the district's policy for retirement. So if they're, they're paying for, say, health insurance to age 80, as an exaggeration, obviously, this would probably be of more benefit to them than it would be to us. And I'm using that as an example, but everyone, you know, is just, you know, using whatever funds they have for operations and they're not necessarily funding this.
And what is our actual, so for the 22-year-old retiree, what is, we're obliged to pay them?
Well, they would have to meet the retirement criteria and the retirement age, so. Years of service. So if someone came in at 22, hit the lottery and says, hey, I'm retiring, doesn't have years of service, doesn't meet the retirement age. So there are criteria with Ursa and MERS in that regard. But your example, Dr. Larkin, is, is valid as sort of an exaggeration. But for, right now, I think we have maybe half a dozen, maybe a little bit more retirees who are under that 65-year-old threshold. And we are paying for them, the district's portion, they pay their 20% or whatever it is.
I'm sorry, how many people did you say it was?
I wanna say, if I'm, if I'm remembering the worksheet correctly, I think there's about half a dozen, maybe, maybe eight who are, who have retired and are under the age of 65, because they're not Medicare eligible until 65.
Right. So the 6.89 million still, that's, you know, a significant liability. How many people are, so how many people actually qualify to get into that pool to make that calculation?
None, because we make them go on Medicare at 65.
But the 6.89 is.
For future.
Yeah.
For the future.
If, if, if everybody who met retirement, unless I misunderstand what that number means, that it, how do you calculate that? It, it's, it's the number of people under the age of 65 who could retire and then we would still owe them a benefit, right?
Correct.
How does it get up to 6.89 million if we've got?
To be honest, I don't know. I would have to speak in more depth with the actuary who does this.
Because you'd have to have a relatively young workforce that has had a fairly significant contribution to the district already.
Exactly. And with the retirement system in Rhode Island now requiring people to work much later into life, it's not, it has a least impact on this, a lesser impact.
All right. Those are my questions. Any questions? Mrs. Farnworth?
First, I wanna thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent presentation. When, when I saw this on the agenda, I pulled out my audit from last year. Because it, I was surprised at the size, right, of $6.8 million of the unfunded liability. And I said, gee, you know, I remember when the town went through the audit for their side of the house. Councilor Edwards in particular called out the town side unfunded liability as something that was truly scary. And I, so I said, I gotta look at this. And just to reiterate that our employees are only getting small benefits to qualify for this. And this was a, this was, I believe, a, the GASB that mandated this several years back. It's not, wasn't our choice.
Correct.
Right. But just to, you know, point out, right, we have significantly more employees than the rest of the town combined. Our unfunded liability of 6.9 million really speaks to the fact that we're only covering employees for health and dental up to 65, right? That, that's it. On the town side, they have $17.6 million in unfunded liabilities with far fewer employees. So their benefits much, package must be much more.
Their retirees' benefit package presumably is more robust.
Correct.
Presumably.
Presumably. So that's one thing I wanted to point out that I learned when I was looking at this. Secondly, our, the percentage of the unfunded liability for the schools is 6.3%, the funded percentage, 6.3%. And I do know that the town is contributing every year through its budget toward the OPEB liability. And I think that could be in addition to making the benefit payments. I'm not really sure how they, they handle it and I won't presume that. My question is, though, do we truly know that our 6.34% is in keeping with most school districts? Apples to apples?
I did not look at that, but I can get that information for you.
That would be my only concern, is if we find out that we're significantly higher or lower than school districts in general throughout the state. You know, what, what the town does is what the town does, but our concern, you know, making sure that we're not somehow an outlier in that regard, that we would have to talk about including it in our budget for contributions moving forward.
I could get that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, for us to have to meet that liability in total, it would have to be a significant chunk of the workforce, which I can't, you know.
No, but that's.
A second COVID epidemic is more likely.
Why actuaries make money.
Yeah. Mrs. Palish? Any questions?
Thank you though, Amy.
You're welcome.
I mean, it was all just, you know, the Government Accounting Standards Board is wanting, they wanted disclosure because people were giving away these generous, generous benefit packages instead of salary increases.
Not golden parachutes, platinum go, parachutes.
Exactly. And, and they just weren't accounting for it in their financial statements. And then all of a sudden, there were these huge liabilities and payouts, so.
Well, I think if, if nothing else, this points out that Tiverton Schools are not giving out golden parachute-type packages.
No. Think about parachutes with holes in them. All right, so moving up to item 8A, Safety Committee Subcommittee of the School Committee. So we continued this for a couple of meetings in order to find a likely victim to be the second member of the Safety Subcommittee.
For the school committee?
No. Well, we may be looking for other school committee members too, who knows? But no, for the Safety Committee Subcommittee of this, the Subcommittee of the School Committee. And two of us were gonna sit on it. I'm one of them.
This, but this is just, so has this already gone out?
Uh, no, we were waiting.
This is to a point.
Waiting you to.
One of us to it, and then we send out the invitation to get people to be on it.
Because I, at one point, we were just approving the letter, but we're good with that.
We're good with that. So we, we delayed actually appointing the second school committee member because I think either one or both of you weren't here. Huh?
Yeah, I would like to be on it.
You would like to be on it?
Yes.
Diane, you okay with that?
I am perfectly okay with that. I'm glad we waited.
I don't think Mike and.
I know Mike and Elaine had already indicated no interest.
Yeah, okay. So we can send that out and.
So thinking, Dr. Larkin, if it's appropriate to wait, wait till the end of August, beginning of school year, where people might actually be more tuned to look at it.
Okay.
Agree. I think this is good.
Okay.
Good move, Peter.
All right, then we are going up to eight, item 8B, FY '24 Budget Update.
So a little bit of good news on the allotment from the state, yes. It's $36,465 higher than what it was. It's still a significant decrease from where we were last year.
So where did it end up, the decrease?
The overall decrease then was, I'm sorry?
So the, but the.
Decrease from last year.
The overall year on, year, year on, year.
It was whatever it was before minus 34.5.
Yeah, it was like $300,000, so now it's.
Yeah, all right. Well, it's fun to hear, a nicer number.
Get your calculator out.
My question to the school committee is, do you, well, I'm gonna bring this back now, putting that $36 million into the total. So do you wanna revote the new total? Or do you feel like?
I think we need to revote, we need, I don't, unless you guys did this when I was out, did you vote the line item budget yet? As enacted? When was this? At the last meeting?
No, you had a line item budget as part of your, your budget book.
Yeah, the, the vote we took was the final.
We took a.
Line item vote, yeah, line item budget to the town council or town, the budget committee. I don't think we voted anything since then.
Right, so we need a new line item based upon the final numbers.
So put the 36 in.
Yes.
Give you the line item and you wanna revote it. Okay. We'll do that in the next meeting.
I think so.
Yeah, I think that's the most.
Then we all, you know, we kinda know, we all agree on where we're starting and we have the right, right number.
Right, all right. Anything else on that?
Nope, that's it.
All right. So we are meeting right now theoretically August 1st, perhaps August 24th or 31st, depending on.
July.
Or sorry, July 24th and 31st, depending on what the town council can do. Otherwise, I'll communicate with people by email about other potential dates if those don't work for them.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Larkin?
Mm-hmm.
If I may, if you look at the school committee meeting calendar, it was approved earlier, there, there's a meeting scheduled for August 15th. And I'm working with Brewster Thornton Group, wondering if we could delay that a week to the 22nd. Reason being is there's, that's the meeting they wanna, they wanna, they wanna meet with the building committee first to get approval on the stage two and then bring it to the school committee and that date would be more ideal for them. Unless you wanna meet on the 15th and the 22nd, but.
22nd is good.
Works for me.
All right. I would just think, yeah, we should probably have that stage two to us significantly before that. And we need to be prepping the town council for it as well.
Right, and they're gonna ask for a date to go to them after the 20, after the 26th.
We should establish that date.
Now that you've agreed to the 22nd, when you talk to Ms. Dean and Darris, maybe you could say.
Well, on the 24th and the 31st, we can bring it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we need a date after the 22nd.
We need a date from you guys.
Right, okay.
And be, you know, after August 22nd, but before September 12th.
Right, so that's a little window.
Yep.
Right.
Actually, you might wanna, yeah, if you talk to her about these dates, good, good point, Peter, you might wanna give her a heads up.
Yep, 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 yep. Anything else with regard to meetings? All right, I'm gonna ask for a motion to move into executive session under Rhode Island General Law 42465A3, Review School Safety Plans and High School Report, Rhode Island General Law 42465A1, Job Performance Character, Physical or Mental Health Administrative Contract.
Let me, second.
Mrs. Palish?
Yes.
Ms. Farnworth?
Yes.
I vote yes, we're in executive.